Six thirty-one, so if possible, I'd like to be the first to call the meeting to order. And looking at who we have in attendance tonight, I would, um, and our roles, I would like to recommend that Jim chair the meeting tonight.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I think we can, comfortable with that?
Home in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right, can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll motion it.
Second?
Home in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, let's go into the minutes. Can we get a motion on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Any questions on the minutes?
No, they were, they were pretty short, but very concise and represented our previous meeting.
Home in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have no public hearing tonight, thank God. Uh, let's see if this is our fifth member. Yes. Oak Tree.
Chair, members of the commission, thank you. Tonight we'll be reviewing Phase Two of the final plat of Oak Tree. So if you are familiar with the site, to get your bearings a little bit, the property line to the east is Jonathan Carver Parkway. This project is just south of Carver Crossing and north of Carver Square, so where the dental clinic is and where the Children of Tomorrow Child Care Center are. The project has been before you several times. We have reviewed a final plat for this project previously. Phase One is highlighted on the colored rendering, so that was a review of sixty-three units. It was before the Planning Commission, um, in April of twenty-eighteen. So this is Phase Two. You can see in the red dotted lines, it's eighteen single-family homes to be considered As part of this project, there are four phases for the project, so this is flipped to get your bearings correctly, so Jonathan Carver Parkway is running north-south on this one. You can see Phase One is the previously approved, that does a but Jonathan Carver Parkway. Two is what we're discussing tonight, it's in the center of the screen. Three wraps from the northwest corner down to the south center of the screen, and then Four is the southwest corner. So tonight, again, we are just discussing the eighteen lots that are in the center. So the lots tonight are a little bit larger than what we've seen in this development previously. They range from about sixty-three feet wide to seventy feet. There will be an extension of Maple Drive coming off White Pine Way. The eighteen lots that are up for final plat tonight are consistent with the PRD R-two zoning that we've previously held the public hearing on, discussed, and has gone through City Council. Some information from the landscaping plan, you'll see that this section of the project does a but the large outlot that has some of the bluff features and the trees are in the center. So these, about that, but also do include trees in each lot throughout the development and is consistent with the preliminary landscape plan and the final landscape plan that have previously been reviewed by the Planning Commission and City Council. So, a pretty small request tonight with just eighteen lots for final plat, with anticipation of two additional phases, Phase Three being the big lift of the amount of units in this development. So, I will open it up for questions, discussion. There are representatives from the development team in the room tonight if you have specific questions about the project.
Do you have any questions?
I do. Um, I saw in the notes that there will be a sidewalk on one side of whatever the street is.
Maple Way.
Yeah, I didn't see it on the drawings that were included in the packet. Has there been a decision on where it is?
Yes, so it runs, um, I'm gonna go back, one. So it's on the west side of the property, so if you, the center would-
Okay.
Sorry, east, it's on the east, this is flipped. So it's along the side that is closest to the outlot.
Side that is closest to the outlot, okay.
Correct. And if you'll recall, that outlot does have that fantastic trail running through it-
Yep.
That is a great feature for the development as well.
Okay.
And what, you have this up, is it the area outlined in red on that bottom-left colored?
Correct, so that is, those are the eighteen units for final plat tonight.
Thank you.
So, we don't have any houses up at all?
Correct.
And we're already doing Phase Two?
So I will admit that's partially my fault. They are in for two permits, but something that I like to make sure of before I release permits at a staff level is that my team is able to get to the units. So thinking about my inspections team, when they go out there for the footing and foundation inspections, I like to have them have a pretty clear route, so it's not an issue for them to get out there in their truck or their car. So I'm working pretty closely with Lennar right now. I anticipate releasing two permits next week. So, they were doing some mass site work, and I just wanted to make sure that it was safe for my inspections team, as well as emergency vehicles that might need to get in there. So, they have some of the lots staked, but we needed to work a little bit on that clear access, so it was quick and easy if anyone needed it to be.
I think when they originally came in, they were talking about three years for build-out. Is it, is that still the case, or is it gonna move along faster?
I will likely deflect that question to Mark if he would like to come up.
Good evening, commissioners, my name's Mark Sostegar with the Lennar Land Team. The reason we're coming in with this plat right now is this brings in the third product for the Oak Tree Development, which is the larger single-family homes on the larger lots. So as we planned this site, our goal was to have the villa area model and then the smaller lots that you see in the northeast corner, that model open, and then a third model also open for spring preview. So all this is, we're gearing up to being open and ready for most of our sales to start next spring. It just takes, takes time to get, um, the lots ready and completed.
Okay.
So, but, uh, we're still looking at a three-year build-out.
And there are four total phases planned, correct?
Correct.
Um, are the remaining phases also this larger lot size, similar homes to the Phase Two?
Um, the next phase will be the rest. In Phase One was, um, the, all the villa lots.
Ah, okay, sorry, I didn't have this in my, okay, so-
So, yeah.
Okay, so, all right, so lemme, lemme rephrase my question. Um, so Phase Two, part of Phase Three and Phase Four would all be that larger lot?
Correct.
Okay.
So the next phase, which will-
Will be Three, will be-
A mix.
A mix, yes, it'll be the rest of the smaller lots and a good portion of-
And then the larger lots that'll continue along Maple Lane.
Right.
Cause along Maple Lane, it's all the same format of home?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So we'll, we'll be, um, our plan would be to build Phase Three, or do the development for Phase Three next year, so that, that'd be two thousand nineteen, so we'd be selling homes on those lots in two thousand twenty.
Okay.
We're always, development, we're a year, year and a half ahead of actually building the homes.
Okay.
I have a twofold question on the Phase Two. What would be like a possible earliest close date, and someone can move in, and what is the price range for the product?
Um, so Phase Two, um, the earliest close date would be, oh, our plan is to build Phase Two this year, get the streets in, and then start our, that, um, third model to be open for spring preview, which is in February. So we, or February, early March. So our plan would be to, um, start selling in that time, so we anticipate the first closings in that Phase Two would be next summer. Does that make sense?
Like June, July?
Somewhere around there, depends on where the sales are, but we'd be ready for closings in June. And then the price range, this is a step up from the other. Right now, the, um, the single families would be in the mid-three hundreds, these would be in the upper three hundreds, pushing four hundred for these larger lots.
And then just for my reference, so, I'm sorry, I don't know what the north-south street road is to the very west-
That's okay.
-that connects into Copper Hills, maybe?
Does.
Yes, okay, so the homes that are along that street, I assume are the similar larger lot size, single-family homes?
Correct.
Um, are the lot sizes in width similar to what are in Copper Hills, and that adjacent?
Yeah.
I thought they were, just, yeah, okay.
Yes, the lots in Phase Two and Three, they range from in the low sixties to seventies, which is consistent with Copper Hills.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I wasn't here for the preliminary plat on this development, that's why I have so many questions, I'm so sorry.
Totally fine.
I missed that meeting.
That's okay.
Way back.
That's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Now you want an approval for the final plat?
Yes.
Anybody wanna make a motion on the approval of the final plat?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Home in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose? You good?
Good, thank you.
All right, let's move on to item, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Five point two, Lakeview Industries Concept Plan.
Thank you. Chair, members of the commission, tonight we are review, reviewing a concept plan for a light industrial use near Fleet Farm in the city of Carver. So to get your bearings, uh, the map on the screen, the star shows where the site is, so just north of the Fleet Farm off Levi Griffin Road, near the intersection of Highway two twelve and Jonathan Carver Parkway. On the screen right now is also the preliminary site plan for the project. You'll see the building in kind of the yellowish-orange is the building for the first phase of their development. So, at this time, it's roughly one hundred and forty-three thousand square feet. This design is still being modified a bit by the Lakeview team, as well as city staff, but this is just a general id, idea of what it might look like, subject to change as we start to learn more about the site and the project. There are two future expansions that are proposed on the site, not to be considered tonight, but sometime in the future, they likely will be moving forward. So, Phase One is the ninety thousand square foot addition, and Phase Two is actually a second building of about the same size as the first proposed building. So a little bit of detail about Lakeview Industries and what they do, they're currently in the city of Chaska, and they've been in business for over thirty years. They manufacture and fabricate flexible components, including gaskets, die-cuts, molded rubber parts, extrusions, and weather stripping. Please don't ask me specifically what half of those are. And the markets that they serve include medical, recreation, agriculture, aerospace, telecommunications, so on and so forth. And customers that I thought might have a little bit more name recognition, there are several on their website, include Pentair, Medtronic, Bobcat, Toro, Polaris, Fasinal. And it's anticipated that eighty-five jobs will be at the Carver facility, so this will greatly increase the daytime population we have in the city of Carver, which is exciting to start to generate some more commercial use throughout the city. The city manager, Mayor, and I had the opportunity to tour Lakeview Industries a couple weeks ago, and it was really interesting and fascinating to think about the things that they make there. It's often the things that make our lives easier that we don't recognize are parts. So, something that we saw the manufacturing of is the slit where you put a CD in your car, the little plastic, almost like mouth of where the CD goes, they were manufacturing that. A part that we don't recognize is a part probably, but definitely makes things easier for us. Renderings of the building, again, pretty preliminary at this stage, but an idea of what the building might look like. This would be a great opportunity if you have thoughts, feelings, opinions about any of this information. The developer is in the room, it's also a great time for staff to get some direction. Thinking through the comprehensive plan, the property is guided as an industrial use, so not, no comp plan amendment will be required. There will be a rezoning if we choose to move forward, so rezoning from an agricultural use to light industrial, but it does meet the intention of our twenty-thirty comprehensive plan. If you guys wanna open it up for discussion, questions, comments, there are members from Lakeview here, so if they're really specific, I might default to them, but just general concept level thoughts, feelings.
The eighty-five jobs, that's with the original, in, the initial building, or is that final number?
Should be pretty close to that.
Okay.
Do you have some? Yeah, come over and talk into a microphone, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Can I add, add a follow-up to, to that? I just, of those jobs that are coming, how many of those are head-of-household jobs of the eighty-five?
I, I don't have that answer, but we can provide that. There are rough, around eighty-five jobs that will be here, uh, when they move in, and there will be growth from there, too.
So are you keeping your existing head, uh, existing facility in Chaska, or are you relocating to this?
There are actually two facilities in Chaska now, one that's owned, uh, where they have their corporate headquarters and, and manufacturing, and they have an off-site warehouse where they'll be combining both of these into this facility-
Okay.
And, um, doing something else with their owned facility then. Not, not for their own use, though.
Okay, so they're planning in, is to-
Seller lease.
Is to migrate their existing-
Yep.
-business?
All of their business will be into this building, correct.
Okay.
Something that's really exciting about this proposal is the range of jobs that will be in the facility as well. So it is some of those manufacturing jobs, but also customer service, engineering, some office use. So it runs a gamut of the demographic that we'll be hitting as well, which is exciting.
Okay, so I work in manufacturing, can you describe in a little bit more detail the types of operations that are done to manufacture these products, so I get a better understanding of the equipment that is used? Or the types of processes?
Well, they, they have a team that will, uh, work with clients who have a need for a product, and they will help design that product, uh, and then, uh, take parts and manufacture it. So, they have a, a wide variety of manufacturing, uh, equipment or machines-
Okay.
Uh, anywhere from, uh, adhesives, uh, that they may put on, uh, weather stripping, but it's a, a very wide, uh, variety.
Okay.
Ryan, will you share what your role is in this project?
I, I am the broker.
Oh, I see, okay, so maybe, I'm not maybe asking the right person for this question, but-
Yep.
Um, I guess I'm just trying to understand, I mean, I, I saw the description of the types of materials, so I can imagine things like, um, injection molding, uh, screw machine, uh, extrusion molding type equipment.
Yeah, water jet.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so some, maybe some sheet metal fabrication, or metal fabrication?
Yeah, I mean, they, they do a lot, and, uh, I mean, that's part of, you know, why they're, they're great, they're very flexible to help solve client's solutions or problems.
Do you know how many shifts they plan to run at this facility?
I believe two.
They operate two right now.
Okay. Would they ever consider doing three?
I don't know that, the answer to that question.
Okay.
What about the, uh, byproducts? If we have any, well, heavy concerns about chemicals or waste materials that we, that should require any special precautions?
Yeah, anything they have, they deal with appropriately by law, and, um, not that I'm aware of that there'd be any issues. They, they run a very good operation.
In applying some language from the city code, I don't foresee it being a nuisance use, which includes vapors, smell, noise. Um, having an opportunity to tour their facility and see some of their everyday operations, I don't foresee any adverse impact.
Okay, yeah, I mean, yeah, the question would be also if they have any, um, byproduct of their production that they need to dispose of that could require some specific requirements, but, yeah, I mean, if you didn't see anything in there, then-
Yeah.
They probably don't have any, they would need to have some kind of facilities in their existing facility to handle that kind of disposal.
Uh, how about water usage?
Good question.
Doesn't sound like you would use a lot of water, but-
Yeah, they do use a, a decent amount of water, and, and they, um, build that back into their system a, as well, and are, uh, mindful of, uh, I guess, recycling, reusing, um, and stewards of the environment, if you will.
While we were on the tour, we saw a piece of equipment that was using water, and we toured with the president of Lakeview, and he shared with us that they recognized that their water bills were excruciatingly high a few years ago, and they were actually able to design a recapture system in their machines, so they are able to recycle the water, cut down on use, but also cut down their bill, too.
What do they think, um, the timing might be on Phase Two, potentially? I mean, is it like a five-year, is it something shorter on the horizon, or?
I, i- yeah, it could be five years. The facility itself that will be Phase One, they will occupy around two-thirds of that.
Okay.
They're trying to build in excess space, which would hopefully be leased out to another tenant in the interim.
Okay.
And so, uh, that's one thing that drew them to this site, was the ability to expand their business and grow, and not be, uh, stuck in, in a position that they are currently in right now.
Mm-hmm.
So, it depends on how they grow into that first built-in expansion they have, and, and how long that takes.
Okay.
Has our fire department seen this?
Yes, we've circulated the plans. So as we start to get some more information, as we move through the plating process, they'll do a formal review, but yes, they are aware of the project.
Do they think they're gonna need a ladder truck?
Oof, that is a question to ask Dan Meyer, I think.
This is a two-story building, right?
This is a one-story building.
Okay.
We put windows on the top to make it more appealing to the eye, as well as bringing more natural light into the, the facility for the workers.
How high is the actual ceiling? Is it, is it storage airspace, like accessible via forklift?
Yes, this building is designed to be a, be a manufacturing and warehouse building, uh, to, to store product, as well as to manufacture, so, uh, the, the height between the floor and the bar joists would be thirty-two feet, so there's, well, thirty-six feet to the roof.
Something that was really interesting about the tour, too, is they have so much of the product on hand that they need to store, that they work through throughout the day, so a lot of it was storage that needed to go up instead of out, so they would finish a batch and be able to go and grab more product and continue working.
I'd just like to say, um, thank you, if you could thank your client for, for choosing Carver to come here. I know, um, you know, the, the heights and the manufacturing, this meets modern manufacturing needs, and that it's difficult to expand or renovate existing buildings, maybe, which is why they were looking for different space. Um, so I'm thankful we had the green space here in Carver, that there's still gonna be some, um, you know, synergy. And, and the design, I think it looks very, um, appealing for the, the use. The concern I have, um, is really not so much with the first phase, but, um, just something to note for the second phase. Um, I see for the first phase, you do have, um, some stormwater ponds to capture the runoff, because you've got a lot of pavement here, um, before it hits some of those existing wetlands area, but I don't see much of a buffer there for Phase Two, especially looking at plan north. Um, you have parking, um, on that north side of the rear of the building, and then an, um, abutting up to an existing wetland. So I wondered if there was going to be, um, and it maybe it's too premature, but in the future, if there would be, um, any other mitigation methods that might be considered, um, instead of having the, the parking lot, um, a, a but so close to that existing wetland.
Sure. So, the applicant right now is working on a wetland delineation, and then the Carver County WMO, the Water Management Organization, will need to review this project and make sure it does meet their warrants for buffering, but point well taken.
Uh, my other question, um, also relates to, uh, future phase out with the storm ponds, they look like pretty significant size, but I'm wondering if these storm ponds were built out, um, with, um, the future phases in mind, or if additional, um, water collection areas will have to be, um, created.
Sure. I'm under the impression that the stormwater ponds can accommodate the entire site, so instead of going back and having to redesign them, they'll go in once and accommodate the site.
Thank you.
Sure.
I do wanna make a comment, I like, um, about the design, um, I like the way the two phases are designed such that the dock doors are sort of together. Um, because, you know, as you noted in the previous slide about sort of the comprehensive plan and what's surrounding that, right, you've already got Fleet Farm to the south, I think east and west are industrial areas, but to the north is residential, right? But what we have facing residential in this design is an office front with parking, it's not dock doors. So I appreciate that that sort of is kind of contained in the middle of the development. I think that also probably helps with some of the traffic in and out, uh, along DeWalter Road, um, as well, so I like that piece of it, particularly in how it's going to fit in our city.
Along that lines, DeWalter Road is, is the road that runs east of the gas station?
Correct.
Okay.
So-
So this'll just be continuation across?
Yes.
What about the, now it's, if I remember, it's a dirt road that goes into the water tower?
Mm-hmm. So-
Is there any intent that that would probably be upgraded to a paved road for the site?
The city uses that as an access tower, or an access to the water tower. Um, as part of our discussion through the concept plan, we're going to work on the access spacing a little bit. Brian Skoak, our Public Services Director, would have a preference to not allow traffic on that road, but something we'll work through with the applicant in the design phase.
Okay.
Question for either the representative or Aaron, from what you saw touring their facility, um, company seems like it's more manufacturing, but obviously with the dock doors and so forth, there's probably some distribution and/or the clientele picking up product, obviously increasing traffic flow, semi-trucks and so forth. Um, from what you saw, maybe, Aaron, what, at their current facility, what's the approximate trucks that maybe would be on-site at a given time, or increase in the traffic flow or so forth?
So I think comparing it to their current site is a little bit tricky, since they're in two locations. It was a, quite a bit of back and forth with some of the truck traffic. Um, from some of the preliminary studies that our city engineer has done, Levi Griffin is a future collector road, so right now it's a collector, but it's relatively small. But it is anticipated to have some of that more industrial use of traffic, and the infrastructure is built to accommodate that. So I can't speak specifically to the amount of trucks that are going to be back and forth, but we do have the capacity in our infrastructure.
See, is it primarily, uh, smaller trucks or big, I'm guessing you probably don't have a lot of, uh, large trucks? Or am I wrong?
Uh, what, like, a semi? We are anticipating semi-traffic.
Fifty-three footers?
Yeah, I think it's, it's a combination.
Cause I assume they have suppliers that are bringing things in on semi, and they probably have materials leaving on semi.
I would be interested in seeing if it does come to that word, semi, is that eighteen-wheeler? Is that, do I have that right? Um, if the city can put limitations on the timeframe.
That's kinda why I asked about shifts, right? So if we're talking about first shift, second shift, right, that's kinda during the daytime hours versus a third shift, which would be potentially impactful for-
But like a, if there's any regulation, or, you know, would we wanna work towards that for like a receiving dock, you know, what are operational hours?
I don't know if we have any limitations currently on Fleet Farm.
I, I was just gonna say, I don't know if anything-
Yeah, actually, I don't know what, what it is there.
And I, I'm just playing devil's advocate for just a moment, we don't have any housing or not, uh, in that- We don't have any housing in that area, and there's quick access, very close access to the highway, which I'm guessing that they're going to get on. So while I appreciate the question, it doesn't... For me personally, it doesn't rise that level of concern to put that kind of restriction on that area.
Yeah, I mean, you know, to my point earlier, having sort of the dock areas in between the facilities does keep the truck traffic away from potential residential north, right? Because they'll come in through Levi Griffin Road and go up and then go back down. They're not...
There's a natural barrier there.
Yeah. I'd agree.
Well, in all honesty, this is kind of what we wanted there.
Absolutely. I mean, it's been part of our comprehensive plan discussions for years. Absolutely. So it is a perfect fit.
May I add something into that? So, you know, I'm a broker. I sell and buy commercial estate. And with this being in a guided industrial zone with commercial adjacent on one side, and I think more industrial guided the other way. It's kind of in the middle of what would be industrial. And so it would be problematic from our perspective if we have many restrictions like that, because what we want to do is try to build a bigger facility. You know, this isn't... We don't build this just for us. We build this for our exit, too, in 20, 30 years, whatever that might be. And just restrictions like that, you know, are challenging when comparing to other industrial-zoned locations within other cities.
So do you need anything from us tonight?
No, there's no formal action tonight. It's just a chance for you to see it for the first time, start some dialogue, give staff some direction as we start to work through some of this process with the developer.
Yeah, when do we expect to see a preliminary plat?
Sure. So this one, if things go according to plan, is going to be pretty fast and furious. They were hoping earlier this summer to have a dig date of September. So it's going to go pretty quick.
Okay.
So anticipate that some of those processes might run simultaneously. So at a future meeting, we might be reviewing rezoning, preliminary plat, final plat.
Is this also part of property that needs to be acquired as well into the city of Carver? Is this already in?
No, it's currently within the city limits. So no annexation, no comp plan amendment, but rezoning, preliminary plat, final plat to come.
Got it.
I have what I think is just one last, kind of to confirm. So just to summarize, currently they have two physical facilities, the headquarters and the warehouse. Or it's manufacturing plus warehouse.
So their main owned facility in Chaska is 40,000 square feet. They have office, manufacturing, and some storage. And their other facility is all warehouse storage that is leased, also in Chaska.
So this would consolidate it to put them at one physical location?
Yep, so they'd consolidate and grow at the same time.
And then is the current employee count 80-time FTE, full-time employees? How many contractors are contingent? Is the 85 what you anticipate to go to, or what is the current head count?
So we were a little less than 85 a couple months ago, and they've already done some hiring. So the 85 is an estimate that we had just recently. But those, I'll have to confirm, but I think are full-time employees.
Is there additional contingent or contractors?
I don't know.
I'd just be curious more just for the volume of traffic, or... I mean, positive things, too, just, you know, more employment opportunities here within the city of Carver.
I mean, his comment earlier that migrating their existing operations to this facility would only take up about two-thirds of the first-phase building. So they're obviously planning for some quick growth.
A lot of growth. Good point.
And I think this project helps spur a lot more for the facility... Or the city with commercial. You know, they like to follow rooftops, but they also need the daytime population. And so that's one thing that we were thinking about, is there aren't a lot of services in the city yet. But I think with hopefully our move there, as well as more growth, then more that will come.
Agreed.
Something I know that has been discussed at past meetings, particularly in this area, when it comes to solar and renewable energy and so forth, is that something that would potentially maybe be considered for a build-out or anything like that in the city?
Yeah, that is in consideration right now.
I believe our ordinance would allow them to put it on the roof, or...
Correct.
We were thinking ahead, right?
That's right.
Well, I'm very excited about this project. Thank you again for choosing Carver, and I think this fits very well with what our vision is, so thank you.
Thank you. We're excited as well.
I would second that.
Where are they located now? I mean, I...
Near Chan Hessen High School. Basically, one facility is just a little south and one's a little west.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any communications tonight?
I assume we'll be having an August meeting?
The August meeting is going to be hefty. Maybe bring some snacks.
Trying to think, when is the August meeting?
Uh, what was that?
16th?
16th, I think. Yeah.
16th.
16th is what I have on my calendar.
I am probably going to be gone.
Okay.
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
Unknown, most likely gone.
Okay. I'll maybe try to get a pulse on that over the next couple weeks. I do need a quorum for that meeting, and I'm anticipating several action items. So if it does become an issue, there might be a rescheduled date.
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn, unless anybody has anything else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.